Folks, so this is the fourth time I'm doing this video because I keep forgetting to include the Farging ISD Board candidates. Alright, so what we're doing today is I am fulfilling another promise to bring to you newcomers, what I can in the way of biographies of the individuals running for ISD Board and City Council. Some, I mean, I can do only the best I can do. If they aren't saying anything or publishing anything, then there's nothing I can do, but I'm gonna do the best I can. So first, let's, because I keep messing this up. Let's go through, oh, uh, what you should do at this point, go to my website, Scott, Scott, the number four, godly.com, okay? And click on the, right under it where it says "All in one, one for all, vote May 6th", uh, go to the last selection in the list view there which says "Sample Ballot, Godly ISD", click on that, a new tab will open, alright? And in that new tab, you will see a PDF show up, or a probab-, well, I mean, you may, depending on your browser, alright, but you'll see, uh, the ISD Board Sample Ballot pop up. So, so, Scott4godly.com, click on Sample Ballot, uh, Godly ISD, yeah. Okay, so we're there. The first candidate, uh, her name is Nova M. Olson, alright? And what I think you should do with regard to Ms. Olson is I think you should look at the April 15th, um, Candidate Forum that was held down, uh, Saturday, April 15th, that was held down, uh, at my mother's place. Uh, Nova was there, and Nova talked about what Nova wanted to do, why Nova wanted to do it, and how she could, um, be your, better represent you on this, on the ISD School Board, okay? I don't know a whole lot about Nova Olson, unfortunately, so, um, she also went to the Lone Star, uh, Lone Star Patriots Candidate Forum and was there. Now, that one was rough, and Nova had the gumption to go and do that. That's a pretty rough little deal there, not because, you know, it's, uh, not because they're, they're mad at you or anything. It's because there's a lot of people there, and you have to get up and you have to say stuff, and answer questions in front of a whole bunch of people, smart people that you don't know. And that's tough, folks, I mean, I made myself look like a complete moron there, so I know. Anyway, I also have that, um, I think I have that, uh, video of Lone Star Patriots Candidate Forum available. And if I don't, I should be, maybe I could find it, or maybe Nova's got it. Anyway, somebody will have it, you can look at Nova Olson there, or you can also look, uh, at the April 15th Candidate Forum that we had in Godly. I can, I have a copy of that on my, uh, YouTube page. You can go to YouTube and search Scott Yarborough. There's a few of us, so, but you'll, you'll see me in there, just look for the guy that looks like me, and, uh, and you'll see me, okay? If not, then, then email me at scottthe number four godly at gmail dot com, alright? And I'll send you the link. That's scottthe number four godly at gmail. Okay, so that's Nova Olson. Next on the ballot, uh, is Kayla Lane. Kayla Lane also, um, is, uh, my Nova Olson sign in my yard, Kayla Lane's sign in my yard. Kayla Lane also attended the Lone Star Patriots Candidate Forum, very outspoken, uh, young lady. She was pregnant at the time, big time pregnant at the time, and, uh, I mean, energy beyond anybody. Unbelievable, the woman, and Nova too, uh, were out block walking before Kayla had the child, her little daughter, and, uh, good grief, I mean, just the, the energy is interesting. So you can hear Kayla at the Lone Star Patriots Candidate Forum video. Probably she'll have copies of that herself. Uh, she also attended the April 15th Candidate Forum that we had Saturday, uh, last Saturday. So you can view what she had to say there, she had lots to say, uh, made some good arguments, in my view. And so, uh, see her there. No one else attended that forum for the ISD Board, alright? So the, and the, the, the next two here are incumbents. The first is Greg L. Miller, I don't have a clue who this guy is, none whatsoever. I can't help you with Greg L. Miller, period. I see his signs around town, I don't know, I don't know who the guy is. Uh, next is Craig Stevenson, I have a little bit of familiarity with Craig because, Craig thought that a certain section of the, the city was open, and so he placed a sign there. It wasn't, it was on private property, I contacted Craig, and he immediately, immediately took care of it, and I met him. Uh, and the guy's a really nice guy, um, you know, he, uh, I don't know anything about what he wants to do. I'm assuming he's just going to do, do what the status quo is, right, right now on the school board, okay? Craig didn't attend any, either of the, uh, meetings, the Lone Star Patriots Candidate Forum. Neither did he, uh, attend the Saturday, April 15th Forum that we had. So, I don't know, uh, I'd say Mr. Miller and Mr. Stevenson were status quo. If you're happy with how the school board is being run right now, then you would vote for Mr. Miller or Mr. Stevenson. If you're not happy, then you want to look into Nova Olson and Kayla Lane, learn more about them. Uh, and I can help you with that, I can't help you with Mr. Miller or Mr. Stevenson. I don't know if they have a platform, where it is, etc., okay? So, alright, so that's the ISD Board. I did it, finally, okay? This is the fourth time I've done this video, and every time I forget the, uh, the ISD Board. Didn't do it, no. Alright, so on to the City Council Candidates. Now, uh, if you go back to the website, you'll see, uh, also in the same area under the, uh, section that says "All in one, one for all", you'll see a sample ballot for Godly City Council. So open that up, and we'll, uh, we'll go through it one by one. And the first name on that is Michael Scianatiko, or Shianatiko, okay? His name is spelled incorrectly on the ballot, and I will get you his actual spelling so you can look him up. The actual spelling of Mr. Shianatiko is, uh, S-C-I-A-N as in Nancy, A-T as in Tom, I-C-O. That's S-C-I-A-N-A-T-I-C-O, Shianatiko. You can look him up on Facebook, if you have Facebook. He has a personal page, and he has a Michael Shianatiko for City Council page, so two of those, you can see him there. If you don't have social media, then you can, uh, oh, I think someone may be here, hold on a second. Uh, okay, so no, no one was here. Ah, where was I? Uh, Shianatiko, so, yeah, Shianatiko, uh, did attend the, the April 15th Candidate Forum, and if you would like to, uh, well, just look at that video and, and, and see what Michael Shianatiko has to say. Uh, he has two Facebook accounts, one is a personal account, and the other is a Michael Shianatiko for City Council account. Um, he is a damn Yankee! No, just kidding, he's a, he's a Yankee, but not a damn Yankee. He's a really nice guy, I've talked to him, uh, I believe, an Ayn Rand fan, so libertarian in his political leanings. Um, nothing necessarily wrong with that. Um, and, yeah, look at the video, look at the April 15th video, and you'll see what Michael has to say, uh, and, uh, what he wants to do, what his ideas are, and how he can, he thinks he can, uh, better represent you than, than the other candidates, okay? So, so do that. And the next on the, the next, uh, line down is Roger Cornellson. Roger is an incumbent, he is the gentleman that sits in between Michael Poppin Fuss and, uh, Mary Ann Matthews. So, if you're watching the City Council meetings, or if you're there, uh, my, uh, the mayor is the guy in the middle, and to his left is, um, Mary Ann Matthews. Love you, Mary Ann, um, enjoy your rest, well deserved. Mary Ann's retiring, so, uh, thank you for your service, Mary Ann, love you very much. And if you need anything, give me a call, okay? Uh, so Roger sits to the left of Mary Ann, and to the right of Michael Poppin Fuss. And, excuse me, folks. So, um, older guy, uh, he, um, he runs a, uh, he runs, um, I think a construction crew for, for, for building schools, okay? So, so kinda high-end construction stuff, um, been around here for a long time. Uh, Jan taught his kids, Jan Whitehead. So Roger is an independent thinker, an independent guy. Uh, Roger's gonna tick you off sometimes, he's ticked me off before in his votes, and I like that, I like that a lot. You know, because I have watched Roger very closely, and I am convinced that Roger, uh, Cornellson has the, uh, that he can, his votes, he considers the policies that have come up for vote. What he thinks about is what is in the best interest. Does this policy benefit a, the larger amount of people, okay? Does it benefit all of us, or does it just benefit the few? If it benefits the few, especially the establishment, then Roger will vote no. If Roger believes it benefits all of us, then he will vote yes. That's why he's going to tick you off sometimes, okay? That's why independent thinkers, independent thinkers, I think, is what we're looking for. So, but, look, Roger went to the Candidate Forum on April 15th, so, uh, come, uh, so, um, look at the video, and listen to what Roger has to say. Roger's got some brilliant ideas, especially about a loop around, I thought that was very interesting in that Candidate Forum, a loop around the city, um, very interesting stuff. So, check him out, see what he has to say, and if you are interested in independent thinking and moving forward in a, in a smart way. Okay, Roger, uh, well, I already said that he has the construction experience. If you're, if you're interested in moving forward in a smart way, I think, uh, Roger is, uh, an interesting choice, a good choice. If you're looking for the status quo, in other words, to leave things the way they are now, Roger's not your man, because, uh, he's, he's not going to be satisfied with the status quo. Uh, next, Jessica Greer. Uh, Mrs. Greer is the husb-, uh, sorry, is the wife of Mr. Greer, Mr. Clayton Greer. Uh, this man has, I think he told me, five businesses, and, just non-stop guy, uh, really nice guy. He has the food truck that's in between Palio's and 1128 there, the barbecue one. Wow, I mean, that stuff is awesome stuff. Go down there and, uh, buy some food from Mr. Greer. Let me take a moment to say that Jessica, if you, uh, if you, well, I'll tell you, Jessica is a Bogart, okay? Her daddy was, uh, Danny, AKA Butterball Bogart. And the Bogarts have been around for a long time in this town, um, and, uh, I didn't know Danny very well at all, honestly, but I did know Harvey and Rita, uh, and, uh, Harvey and Rita were some of the finest people that anyone could ever know. And so if they, um, had taught Danny in any fashion, and I know they did, uh, and passed down those qualities to both he and his daughter Jessica, then, um, number one, Jessica, we lost a gentleman, uh, a fine gentleman in, in Danny, and my condolences to you and your family. And I'm sure that you are a fine woman as well, uh, coming from that blood. Uh, I, okay, let me tell you this story, okay? Just real quick, um, when I was back in high school, I, uh, had my first car, it was a 1975 Plymouth Fury, right? And I drove this, I followed our bus to a football game where we, uh, and, and drove the car there, and then when it was over, I hauled the wrong bus back home. Didn't realize it for thirty, forty-five minutes, maybe more, and realized, oops, that's not the right bus. So, I went to turn around in the middle of nowhere, pitch black, some country road, who knows where it was? And, uh, turned around, started heading back, got lost, even worse, I mean, this was bad. Well, at that point, drive shaft comes out of the car, right there, I'm down, stuck, nothing. Lock it up, start walking. Um, I don't forget how long it was, later I find a hotel, get in the hotel, whatever. The next day, uh, we get ahold of Harvey. Harvey drives out to where this car is abandoned, not abandoned, but on the side of the road. He finds the drive shaft, toes the car in to his shop, and he fixes it. And he presents me a bill, uh, just a few days later, for a hundred and twenty-five dollars. Folks, I mean, Harvey and Rita, uh, they just, just such fine people, fine people. Now, Jessica, I can't find anything where Jessica is, has said what Jessica wants to do, uh, why she's running, why she thinks you should vote for her. But you can, no doubt, go down to the food truck and speak with her there, I'm sure she's there sometimes. Um, I think she's pretty much, probably, I mean, stay-at-home mom, but I'm sure she helps with all the businesses, with Mr. Greer's businesses, so, uh, go down there, chat with her, see what she has to say. She didn't attend any of the, of the, uh, Candidate Forums, so I can't help you with that. But you could find her. Next on the list is Misty Rodriguez, you've probably heard of Misty, most of you, when I knock on your door, you're, 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 you're like, you know, I've, I've heard of this Misty gal, and I'm like, so, yeah. Uh, and Misty has, uh, Misty is running on a non-platform platform? So Misty is not really, uh, talking about, well, you know, I'll, I'll say this, Misty has come out and been in favor of, of things as time has gone on, and I think now, she may have changed her mind a little bit, she is more than willing to answer questions, okay? She couldn't make it to the Candidate Forum, and she had an email address, and I didn't get it again, for contacting her, I'm sorry about that. Uh, email me if you want to get in touch with Misty, scott4godly@gmail, that's Scott, two Ts, the number four, godly at gmail, and I, I will pass your info on to her, and you can speak with her about what she wants to do. Um, I think Misty is, uh, is, uh, I think Misty's an independent thinker, certainly not establishment, as far as I can tell. Uh, so I think, uh, you know, and, and, smart lady, I've, I've had lunch with her a couple times, or maybe, I mean, we've talked. Alright, she's, she's a smart lady for sure. Next on the list is Grace White. Now Grace White, uh, attended the Candidate Forum on April 15th. So what I would suggest is you go and look at that video, and see Grace White's answers, and make your decision from there. She tells you exactly what she wants to do, she wants civility in the city, and she wants to do some stuff with infrastructure. So, uh, go there, look at that. Also, there's a Grace White for City Council page that she has, and she works at the Methodist Church. Come see us at the Methodist Church, folks, Jesus has preached there, it's a wonderful place, okay? Come worship with us, uh, especially on the twentieth of May, we're having a bunch of music, okay? So come, come see that. So that's, that's Grace White, um, I don't have an email address, oh, wait, it's, uh, I think it's gracewhite@gmail, I can't remember. She's got signs around town, they're the really smart ones that say "Godly needs Grace"? That's brilliant, Grace, I mean, seriously, that's really brilliant. More than one person has mentioned how, how quite clever that is, and I agree. It may be gracewhite@gmail, I'm not sure, but if you get in touch with me, if you can't find her, then you get in touch with me, then I can get you in touch with Grace, and you can talk to her. But the Candidate Forum, really, that, that video will help you, I think. Next is Carney Eldridge, Carney Eldridge attended no Candidate Forums, uh, and I tried to get in touch with Carney a month or so ago, I left a card there, I wanted to talk to him, I'm a voter too, right? I want to know, maybe I want to vote for you, Carney. So, and, and, uh, I tried to get in touch with him, left the card on the door, Carney, will you call? He didn't call me. So I have spoken to him before, and I thought he was quite a reasonable guy. I ran back in 2013, and I lost, but while I was doing my thing around town, uh, I, I talked to Carney, and Carney was, uh, he was not necessarily happy with how things were, were in the city, and he wanted some change. And I think he may have supported me in that run, but this time he's, he's just not talking to me. Uh, Carney, I believe, is retired Fort Worth, City of Fort Worth, code inspection. So Carney would have a great deal of familiarity with, say, infrastructure issues, uh, roads, uh, sewer systems, uh, things like that, I think Carney would know, and so he could be a valuable asset, uh, to certain things. One thing that I do know, Carney said at the last City Council meeting, he actually came to the meeting, and he spoke during the five-minute session, and what he said was, uh, "We don't need to do the forensic audit." Well, okay, I completely disagree with Carney on that. Um, your money has been, uh, there's no telling, you know, uh, no one knows where your money is, because for one thing, there's no inventory asset list in the city of Godly, folks. This was admitted to by David Wallace in an open meeting, I think it was in December, I need to go back and find that. Anyway, so, you know, if the state audit is so great, why didn't the state audit find that there was no inventory asset list? Answer, because the state audit is generic, that's why. Okay, so folks, anyway, we need the forensic audit. I, I'm not, you know, I'm not looking, I'm not looking for a witch hunt, I'm not looking to, uh, to prosecute anyone, and that's why I want to do this, no. I want to find your money down to the penny. Now, I've heard rumors that there's been budget rounding as well, so if it's a dollar and twenty-three, then it goes to a dollar. Can't do that, folks, I can do that in my business, because it's my money, right? I have a computer shop, I've run it for twenty-three years, if I want to do budget rounding, then I can do budget rounding. Not government. Now, I don't know that it's occurred, it's just, I, I, it may not have. However, I did hear with my own ears David Wallace say, or answer no to the question, uh, "Do we have an inventory asset list?", I know that, so, okay, forensic audit, absolutely. Uh, la, 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 next is Moi, and, uh, Moi is stunningly brilliant, um, handsome, uh, really brilliant, uh, lovely guy, just friendly, you know, uh, vote for me. Uh, if you have questions, give me a shout, I've said a lot of things all of the time, ticked a lot of people off, both sides, frankly, because, uh, yeah, that's, that's, I don't do personalities, I don't do cliques, and I will not do good old boy, right? What I will do is all of us, we the people, together. When I'm considering policy decisions, okay? What is first and foremost in my mind is, does this policy decision benefit the majority? Does it do, I think, am I, is this policy going to benefit the entire city? And if so, how? If it does, and it benefits everybody, then I'm gonna vote for it, and I don't care who gets ticked off. If it doesn't, then I'm going, I'm not going to vote for it, and I don't care who it ticks off, okay? So I'll tell you later, this is actually, I proved this, it, it's actually come to fruition, um, not because I did anything, but just happened that way. Um, sometimes I'm going to tick you off, folks, because, just because they, you know, I'm, I'm, uh, if we've talked, of course we have talked, or else, you know, you, you wouldn't be seeing this, but, uh, if we've talked, then you know that I am firmly against the Godly establishment ever having control, uh, of the city again, okay? No, no more. And you know then that, uh, I have many problems with how the city has been run, uh, philosophical, politi-, uh, policy-wise, um, uh, okay, so, so, yeah. Uh, but that doesn't mean that every once in a while, the Godly establishment is not going to have a good idea. And just because it comes out of the mouth of an establishment, um, elected official, or not, or whatever, the mayor, let's say, does not mean that the idea is bad. Similarly, just because it comes out of the mouth of Michael Poppin Fuss, or Roger Cornellson, doesn't mean the policy decision or proposal is good, alright? I'm gonna think for myself, for myself, and first and foremost, again, in my mind is, how does it benefit all of us together? Okay, so that's me, if you have questions, uh, scott4godly@gmail. I mean, I'm really the easiest guy to get ahold of, my phone number, address, home address, everything is everywhere, uh, available. If you want me to come to your house, give me a call, I'll set up an appointment, and I'll be there. I've already done that, um, a number of times for a number of people. Okay, so next, uh, actually on the ballot, uh, you, ha, 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 you don't even really need to, just to look at anybody after me. Ha, just kidding. Alright, next on the ballot, we have David Williams, David Hamm, and Jan Whitehead. These are clearly the powerhouse, um, establishment candidates, folks, okay? If you are looking to continue the status quo, that is what we have now, okay? No employees, no inventory asset list, possible budget rounding, who knows? We need to get in there and find out. Uh, developers running over the council like they're, like they're water, then vote the status quo, okay? So, uh, let's go over, uh, uh, the first is David Odell Williams. Now, Mr. Williams is a newcomer, in the sense that, uh, David Hamm has already served, uh, many years ago, David Hamm served, uh, he is definitely, uh, not necessarily a newcomer. And Jan Whitehead is, of course, the lady who sits to the right of the mayor at the City Council meetings, and she's been there forever, okay? She's an incumbent, wants to come back. David Odell Williams is a new recruit, I say, I, I think they went and got him because he, uh, the establishment went and got him is because he's a very popular man, uh, very nice man, friendly, smart, um, um, you know, by his own admission, a man of character, a man of integrity, um, a man who believes in transparency, and a man who believes he has experience to run things, and so, he is a retired ISD, did a lot of stuff, uh, principal, and, shoot, I can't remember where. Uh, no, I mean, it was here, but I don't remember if it was high school, or, or, or what it was, but, uh, anyway, David Odell Williams has a Facebook page, he's easy to find, um, you can see him. He hadn't been talking very much about what he wanted to do, he had like a, an announcement thing. Have that somewhere, where is that? The, humma, 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 well, anyway, somewhere I have his announcement. Like February seventeenth, or eighteenth, or something, on his, uh, down in his feed, it'll, he's got that there. He did not attend any of the, uh, Candidate Forums, and he has not been talking very much about what he wants to do, or how he wants to do it, okay? He's been pretty much in, uh, the first announcement was in platitudes, uh, and, uh, where is that? Oh, it's, I'm gonna see this, first announcement was in platitudes, he says he wants to, that, well, you know what? Never mind, uh, check out the video that I have, the, the other video on the, uh, on this channel, this YouTube channel, in my YouTube account there, that, uh, and, and, and I have a discussion, kind of, I mean, a discussion with David Odell Williams, it's not really a discussion, it's that, it's, uh, I, uh, asked him a question on Facebook, and he answered. Ha, 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 he finally answered. Uh, been tagging him for a while to see, you know, to try to get him to, to say something, you know, something at least, because he'd been posting nothing but, you know, sunset videos and baseball games and stuff, and I wanted to know what he wanted to do, and how he was going to do it. Now, okay, I already knew he was establishment, but anyway. Uh, so that's David Williams, David Odell Williams, I have a video, you can, you can look at that video, make your own decisions, you know? I mean, uh, he hasn't said a whole lot, but the things that he has said, and because, I mean, I just, I know these things. Uh, yeah, he's, he's with the establishment. Now, next, uh, down after David Williams is David Hamm. David Hamm is, uh, most assuredly establishment, uh, the Hamm family has been, uh, in Godly forever, and they have been in government forever, and they are definitely part of the, you know, the, the governing crowd, uh, you want to be, uh, if you're in the establishment, then, uh, you want to be good with David Hamm, uh, and Tony Hamm. Uh, Tony works over at the bank, ACS Bank, she'll help you, uh, she's very good at helping you with whatever you need to do at the bank. Both really nice people, nice people, uh, but, uh, they play for the wrong team, so. David Hamm is not a new candidate, he served back David Hamm is not a new candidate, he served back in, uh, the mid-two thousands, uh, when I, when I ran the first time, and, uh, pretty much, you know, that's because, well, you know, what they did back then was they rubber stamped whatever David Wallace wanted to do. Uh, that was what the City Council existed to do, uh, so. And then there's Jan Whitehead, she's last on the list, and we all know what Jan is going to do, Jan is going to continue the status quo. Uh, and so if you want the status quo, if you believe the status quo is best for everyone, then vote Jan Whitehead, and, and vote David Hamm, and vote David Williams. If you do not, if you think that a new, uh, start is needed, and that the status quo has, is unsatisfactory, and has failed you, okay, then you don't vote for those three candidates. What can I say? That's, that's my view. Um, you make your own decisions and vote for me. Okay. Alright, folks, that's it, that's thirty minutes, that's long enough. If you have questions, get in touch with me, I am the easiest guy to find. Take care.